Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to tonight's regularly scheduled Committee of the Whole meeting. The cameras are on, the microphones are on. Alderman Berghardt was scheduled to chair the meeting. She is under the weather. All of us received an email from Alderman Rodecky. He is traveling the world. So, let the record show that Berghardt and Rodecky are absent. All the other Aldermen are present. Item number one, ladies and gentlemen, is to approve the Committee of the Whole minutes from October 9th, 2017.
So moved.
Motion by Marx.
Second.
Seconded by Swanson. A voice vote is sufficient. All in favor of approving the minutes from 10:09:17, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Items of business. Item 3A is to consider draft resolution awarding bid and contract to Satek Incorporated in the amount of $83,209.90 for the 2017-2018 citywide computer replacement program. Motion by McGowan.
Second.
And seconded by Bruno. Our IT manager, Mr. Peter Collins, is with us this evening. Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Collins? Alderman Marx.
Quickie, how many, what percentage of this is a replacement? I mean, I know we rolled this.
Sure. We, as long as budget is there, we typically try to run a quarter of them a year. So, we're always moving.
And this is a quarter this time?
This is a quarter.
So, this is...
This is a quarter.
The last few years, we haven't been quite a quarter, have we?
No, we've been behind.
Okay, that's what I thought. That's why I didn't know if we were trying to do a little catch-up.
This one, we actually, we're actually on.
Okay, thank you. That was it.
Sure.
Anyway, Alderman Bruno.
Thank you, Mayor. I forgot to ask you this today, but I saw that these are being purchased with Windows 7 with a Windows 10 license.
Correct.
I presume we're waiting to reach some critical mass in terms of making that migration to Windows 10?
Because of the way we do profiles in Police and Fire, we, yeah, we kind of wait till we get a bunch of them and then we move them all at once. For individual users, it's not that big of a deal, but since we have a lot of shared machines in Police and Fire, we have to move them all at once. So, this year is actually, I think the bulk of those machines are actually Fire this year. So, we'll probably move Fire first and go.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else in the dais? Alderman Kilburg.
I'd ask you earlier, but I think you did check out the reference. You're comfortable with those.
Did, indeed.
You had a few in Illinois, I think you mentioned.
Yeah, there's a municipality, I think it was Niles or Mount Prospect, I'm not sure, but we did call up to them and they gave a glowing review. We used to have a different vendor over the past couple of years. Sadly, that vendor went under and so we found a new one, so.
Anyone else from the dais, from the audience? We have a motion, we have a second, a voice vote is sufficient. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Thank you.
Item 3B, ladies and gentlemen, is to consider draft resolution proposing an increase to the non-home rule sales tax. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion by Cummings, seconded by Marx. Questions or comments from the dais and/or the audience? We'll begin with the dais. From the audience.
No questions from the audience.
All in favor of the motion, Alderman Marx.
Can I ask a question? Then, I thought that would be, um, is this the way the state law requires us to word it? I'm not sure.
Yes.
It is. So, it has to be broken out.
Correct. And that was reviewed by City Attorney Radovich.
Then, that was my next question. It said he was currently, so that is the specific...
Yeah, it's always kind of archaic language, if you will.
Well, I think if we do put this on the ballot, it's really going to take some, a lot of explaining so that people realize what we're using it for because, and I think that has to be thrashed out with the council in a short period of time. I know we're in a timeframe tonight, but I don't think a lot of people realize, Kevin, and I'm probably, I'm speaking to the choir here tonight, that, you know, over the years since I've been on the council, starting in 2009, we didn't really raise the real estate taxes to the extent we could. And because of that, we have fallen behind on some replacement of a lot of vehicles, including fire department trucks and small items that we need this money for. And I think that's where we're going with a lot of this, isn't it? Mostly capital improvements?
I would agree with respect to the investments in capital improvements, certainly infrastructure. I would disagree with respect to raising the property tax as much as we could.
No, I said, we kept it down because we knew the time, and that's what I said. We kept, and sometimes we didn't, we didn't move it up at all. I mean, we did, we did freeze it.
Correct.
And so, we have fallen behind, which leaves us in a position now of a lot of catch-up. So, at some point, will we then be discussing before this really goes to referendum, where, how we're going to spend this?
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, okay.
Absolutely. In fact, I think the council is well aware that because the state law currently allows, should this referendum be successful, for a municipality to invest these funds as they see best, that discussion has to be held if you want to base it on just last week's discussion regarding...
Well, that was my next question.
Exactly.
Can we use some of this? Because, you know, to pass two referendums is never going to, it's going to be very hard pressed. So, we could allocate some of this for the stormwater when we get into that discussion.
The council deems appropriate based on input from the citizens and businesses, is that...
Does that make sense to have that discussion tonight or farther down the line?
I mean, we could, my preferences, I think we begin that discussion in earnest at November 3rd workshop.
Okay.
And tie that into the overall budget process.
That's fine.
Which begins in earnest on the 3rd.
I'm fine.
And then, those meetings can be held, obviously, open, but they also can be notified to others as well. Because I think you're absolutely right, Alderman, that there's going to be a lot of questions as to, A, the language, B, the investment.
Because I did show it to a few people over the weekend without any explanation, and there was some confusion. And that's, that's why I asked that question, if we had to word it this way or if we could pare it down. But it is, okay. And I figured that was the answer, but I would, I would tell people to do that, do that little experiment and show it to a few people so that we do understand what we have to explain, because there is going to be a lot of confusion.
No question.
So.
That's all. It was just comments more than anything, Kevin.
Anyone else in the dais, from the audience? Mr. Neary, welcome.
I'm going Patrick Neary, Wildwood Restaurant. Just want to echo Alderman Marx's comments. You know, the restaurateurs were in front of this group over the last year a number of times. And throughout that point, we pledged that we would support a sales tax increase. And I just want to, you appear, we're men and women of our word, but we need information. We can't be proponents of this without knowing what it is and what it's for. And just to encourage you, you know my background, or most of you do, you know that I was with Arthur Anderson for 30-some years. So, I'm happy to pitch. I'd like to know what the capital expenditure plan is. I'd like to know where things are going. I'd like to know what number of years we're going to need to catch up when we're behind. I've heard this from Alderman Malottary, you know, that we've got some specific things that I think as a group, you know, we stand willing with information to be proponents. Myself, I'm willing to, you know, put materials in my window. I'm go that far, but I don't want to do it in a vacuum. So, I just encourage that conversation to go further and as much detail as we can get and get out there than, you know, our businesses, our fortunes, small as they are, embedded in this town for the most part. And we want to make sure that the town gets what it needs and we like the sales taxes being a more proportionate way of dealing with the burden that we have to have the things we want and need in Geneva. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? This will be advanced to the November 6th City Council meeting, as will item 3A, just for the record. Item 3C is to consider draft ordinance amending Title I administrative, Chapter 9 municipal taxes, Article D, Places for Eating Tax of the Geneva Municipal Code.
So moved.
Motion by Bruno.
Second.
Seconded by Ruby. Questions or comments from the dais? Alderman Bruno.
Just a statement for the clarity for the public. We're talking about this as a backstop if that referendum and the previous item does not get approved, there isn't any intent on implementing two taxes. Wanted to make sure that's clear for the listening public.
An important distinction. Thank you. Anyone else in the dais? From the audience? Seeing no hands? Oh, Alderman Simoni. You always refer to somebody to the highest office they once held.
You know, that's the highest office. Tom Simoni, 921 South, Batavia Ave. I was going to get up at the last section, but I figured I'd combine it and wouldn't have to get up twice. Because of you, those of you who know my exercise regimen, know that I don't like to get up more than once if I have to. First of all, when we discussed this back how many months ago, when I was on the council, it was one of the things that was apparently clear, that I believe everybody on the council at the time agreed to, was that the communication for this was horrible, that we didn't communicate well to the restaurateurs regarding this matter. And it caused a lot of, as Alderman Cummings likes to say, angst. I was, I read on Thursday evening on the agenda that these items were going to be discussed. I, from that point on, contacted either personally, face-to-face, by phone, by email, by text, in excess of 60-something of the restaurant owners to let them know. And none of them knew that this was on the agenda for this evening. And I think the city and the staff should be ashamed of themselves for not even letting them know that this was an agenda item. And I don't know how many of you contacted any of them, and if you didn't, you should be ashamed of yourselves. With regards to the two taxes in general, I just am at awe at the fact that you're going to put a tax in place first and then decide what you're going to spend it on second. When I sit here and look at a $1.26 million surplus in last year's budget, and a week or two ago, I heard or read that our reserves are in excess of 30 percent. I just don't, I just don't get how you put the cart before the horse, and in my, in my opinion, you're putting the cart before the horse. Also, part of our agreement or understanding with the restaurant owners back then was, when this comes up again, they like to be involved from the beginning to work with the city in developing a plan that makes sense for everyone, because they want to help and participate in the needs of Geneva. So, I guess my question is, is how many meetings has the city and this restaurant group had since then to discuss these two taxes and the, and their involvement in supporting this initiative? Since what, I don't know when it was?
The original Places for Eating Tax was repealed by this council to ensure and to provide restaurateurs who spoke passionately against it an opportunity to continue the conversation regarding how best we can work together. I led that effort to repeal that tax, as I think everybody knows. The deafening silence after that repeal was such that there was no overtures made to continue discussions. However, this council, and of course committees and other Monday evening, I think Wednesday evening strategic plan discussions regarding expenditures and revenue were held, open meetings. I think we had a few attend, if you will, but not a whole heck of a lot. That's my opinion. Alderman Cummings?
I was just wondering what Dave was talking about, September 18th and 17th. It was a while ago. It was a while ago when we assured that the restaurant group, that if we decide to go down this path again, or how we go down this path, because we, if I recall, we discussed if them support, wanting to support a citywide sales tax, but wanting to be part of that support. I remember Mr. Neary saying exactly what he said a little while ago, is that, you know, we need to know what, what it's for so we can make sure we know what to support. And that, that explained what I said earlier, is that I would think that you'd want to know, or you would have, the council would have a laundry list of what they need the money for before they go ahead and get the money. Speaking of that, I, you know, and you all know me, for the four years I was on the council, I argued that we have to look at both sides of this equation, both revenue and expenses. And here we go again with revenue, 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 and not looking at expenses, 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 and reviewing the expense side of this equation. And I don't think adequate or at least equal amount of time is spent on managing the expense side of this equation as the revenue side of this equation. As, I mean, you read the paper, what's happening at the county level, the jobs they're cutting, the budgets they're cutting, et cetera. Obviously, we all know what's happening at the state level, but I think it's prudent and it's something that taxpayers, I think, deserve, is to have that conversation about that side of that equation as well. And I watch every meeting, and since I've been gone, most of the conversations have to do with revenue, and very few are dealing with expenses. For what it's worth, I think that, oh, and the last, my last point is, if the focus is on the half a percent citywide sales tax, then make the focus on the half a percent citywide sales tax. If, if everybody's paddling in that direction, and you make the restaurant group your allies, and then after that, if that doesn't pass, then decide if you want to pass the Places for Eating Tax. But passing them at the same time with the caveat that if this one doesn't pass, then we're going to come and get this one, doesn't, to me, bode well with a partnership arrangement going into this referendum to working together to get this passed or approved or supported by the, by the citizens. Thank you.
Alderman Bruno.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick, kind of train of thought on communications. I think it's, I've wrestled on this with what's the, what's the sensible timing for this? Because everything's in flux now. I would, I was a little hesitant to put details in text when, over the period of several meetings, these things could change in some appreciable way. But having said that, I'm absolutely happy and eager to sit down with the restaurateurs, anyone that's willing. Thank you.
Anyone else from the dais or the audience? Nancy, welcome.
Good evening. I'm Nancy Lighton. I have the patent house here in Geneva, and I'm also a resident. It was my understanding that when we had the tax rescinded, that we would sit down at some point to discuss this half a percent. We're very, us as a restaurant group, if the city needs finances, we are, we told you back in the spring when this, when our tax was rescinded, that we support the half a percent citywide sales tax where it's fair and will help support that. And if it's my misunderstanding, that I know that we said that we would sit down and keep the lines of communication open and where the budgets stood and stuff like that. I think for the restaurant people, this was all done in April, and in May through right now, we go into all of our festivals, all of our summer times. We all have patios that open, so we do get a little more bombarded. And I, if I misunderstood that we were to reach out, then all of us should have been. And I know that, I don't know if we kind of left it in limbo, whether the city was going to kind of reach out to us when you needed, had some time to discuss things with different Aldermen, but we are all willing and have time to do that type of thing. And I can make time seven days a week, any, any day that works out. Very seldom if I just have a little notice. And I know that most of the people would be happy to sit down and try to figure a good budget and to see where you're strained, where you're strained at. There's probably, every, every week, one day out of the week since June, the end of June, that I've been going to walk over to the city and ask if I could talk to Mayor Burns. And every time I start to do it, something comes up. And so, I have that on my list that keeps being brought to the bottom of my list.
You have to text me. You have my cellphone.
I, you know, I should.
I'll rattle it off now if you'd like.
And, and I really wanted to, and I, and it's my fault, because I've a hundred times, it's been on my list, and it keeps going to the bottom again and to the top for the next week. So, anytime, if we find a way, or if you guys suggest a way, that it's going to be an easier way that we can all put this together and communicate, we're, I know I will make myself available, and we have a ton of good, good restaurant people that would love to do that. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Is that it again? I'll try and keep this brief. First, on communication. Everybody's got a responsibility, but you have a responsibility that is very clear to me. I do business in four communities, and Geneva needs proactive communication. When this restaurant tax, all that's all gone, I'm going to be here talking about communication. You have lots of constituent groups. You do pretty good when you have an issue with residents in a particular community, part because your zoning and all your other stuff has you go do that. But, you know, to expect that you've got people you're representing that you don't have a communication responsibility to is unacceptable to me.
Mr. Neary, can I correct you for a moment? You can continue.
Sure.
There are 145 restaurants in Geneva. The communication that I'm aware of that went to the restaurants went to 33 percent of them.
What communication?
Bingo. The communication alarming everyone to tonight's discussion. Now, let me continue, so...
Communication alarming.
Let me continue. So, 100 of the restaurants in town were never notified. However, what I find most interesting is, and to your point, you're a professional, communication works both ways. The city of Geneva, over the last two years, two-plus years, consolidated its communication network so that anyone and everyone who wishes to know what's going on, whether it be snowplowing, leaf pickup, taxes, public works projects, development projects, et cetera, can do so very easily by signing up for Geneva News. Of the 40-plus restaurants that were included on a communication that I saw, three, three restaurants have signed up for Geneva News. I'm more than happy to take every email I have of every restaurant in town and sign you up. That way, you would receive information on the Thursday evenings prior to the Monday about everything. Whether you want to come or not, so be it. Sometimes it's boring. We just had a gentleman stand up saying, "Oh, what's going on tonight? Not a whole lot, not exciting, but, you know, we have a Places for Eating Tax, we have an ordinance regarding sales tax. Oh, okay, maybe I'll stick around and watch." That is, I think, consummate communication. But as much as we can push it out, I can't force anyone to consume it. I can't.
I'll just say that's a different approach than the other communities I'm used to working with.
What are the other communities' approach? I'd love to know.
Well, for example...
Because we want to do best practices.
Glen Ellen, they decide they're going to look at doing some garbage consolidation where they do it. Every restaurant who is in that area, every time they have a committee meeting, every time they have a village board working session, whenever they've brought it to vote, we've got an email, here's an issue that's, that is relevant to you, please confirm you can attend the meeting. So, it's made easy. It's made easy. I'm not going to, you know, I don't think I've signed up for the Geneva. I will sign up for the Geneva.
I think you'll find that interesting.
But again, I think this particular issue, we know there's some angst about, you know, and it was silent. One Alderman reached out to us, and that was greatly appreciated. It was Saturday, little late for me to, you know, rally the troops. I still sit here, you know, shame on me. I don't know what this means. Consider draft ordinance amending Title I, and I don't, I don't know the details of that. I know something's going on. I don't know if that's going to be on a ballot. I don't know how that ties to the sales tax, if that's within this group or it's within the public domain that, you know, vote for the sales tax, but if you don't, don't worry because we'll pick it up another way. So, I don't have that information, and that, that gives me some concern that if I don't have that information, I'm sure many of the other people are, most of the other people don't have it. So, anyway, I'd like to work on that communication. Again, I understand it's got to be two-way. But I also, I believe, and on organizations that I'm on the board, I feel the responsibility to reach back out to my membership. I can equally be as critical of the chamber than Scott's sitting behind me. You know, I'm paying dues there. I expect they reach out to me, and they come back to me and say, "Something's going on in our community that impacts you. We're here for it." Doesn't happen. So, I don't know why Geneva feels like a little bit of a closed community on this communication to me, and it's been that way the whole time that I've been here. And I want to change that, not because I want to be an ass and sit up here, I just think it would be better for all of us, because then we get the real issues on the table, we get everybody's feelings out there. Everybody feels like they've had a fair chance to voice their views. Take a vote. That's the way it is. On we go. You know, that's all we can ask for. But I feel like, you know, we haven't been able to get kind of all of that flushed out somehow, some way. I'm concerned, again, just to understand how the Places for Eating links to. I mean, I think we have a responsibility to ask the public if they think you should raise more money for the city. And I understand that you have to do that for the sales tax. But if I was a member of the public and said, you know, you just, it's one or the other, you just vote, then I'd say, where's the leadership? You know, what's right?
I think, I think, Mr. Mayor, I think you've been misinformed or perhaps intentionally misguided. The reality is, and Alderman Marx touched on this, there is nobody on this council currently, nor respectfully, nobody who's served on this council, who cannot articulate the money that this city needs in order to maintain what we have or to improve what we have. There's, there's nobody. If they say otherwise, I think they're just fooling you to, for whatever reason. To Alderman Bruno's comment, extensive discussions were had with respect to revenue, no question about it. Extensive discussions have been had regarding expenses. From my perspective, when we look at the state's situation, the local government distributed funds, we're at risk of losing $2 million from that. This council fought to preserve that, and they deserve the credit for that. This community fought to preserve that. They deserve the credit for that. There's a bill now being considered in Springfield that allows Springfield to take an extra 2% of anything that we raise locally to help pay their bills. There's another bill in Springfield to help pay pensions that they're going to take from municipal revenue sources, sales tax, et cetera. Last week, we had a presentation on $5 million investment on stormwater to prevent puddling and flooding and all sorts of catastrophes. Fire trucks are a half million bucks a pop, squad cars, you heard, $83,000 for 25 percent for computer upgrades. It's all there in black and white. Now, if it's expected that I, or any member of the council, should walk door-to-door, in particular, to businesses and say, just say no, here's the reality, please join us... in particular, to businesses and say, just say no, here's the reality, please join us, well, that's not going to happen. So we provide that communication, what I believe is a appropriate way, and we broadcast everything for those who want to consume it, everything. Alderman Bruno stated it very simply. This council has agreed based on the fidelity and based on the passion of the restaurateurs who said some many months ago, move toward one-half of 1% sales tax, that'd be great. We'll fight for it, we'll advance it, we'll push for it and we'll celebrate it. Now rhetorically speaking, I don't know what the jewelers think about that, I don't know what the high-end people on Randall Road think about that, or the high-end merchants downtown, the designers and elsewhere, who think, wait a minute, a half a cent on me is huge. So that discussion's got to be held. But we heard it loud and clear, that's what you want as a restaurateur? We're granting you what you want. Our faith in you is huge. However, my fiduciary responsibility, and I will not speak for the council, is to ensure that irrespective of whether that passes, we have something in the background to ensure that this community remains stable, to ensure that we can provide revenues for infrastructure improvements, public safety, pedestrian safety, et cetera. That's my position.
And I still sit here not knowing what the details are and what you're going to spend it for.
We have five months before the referendum, Mr. Neary.
Fine.
I trust I will be seeing you regularly at the budget meetings.
You will be. My, my one night off a week, I'm going to spend a few bucks.
Well, we look forward to it. It's an investment of your time and your treasure, we respect it.
Because in the last 10 years, I've been a vehicle to, to collect $2 million in sales tax for you folks. I've paid $375,000 in real estate taxes. I've paid $340,000 in electric bills. I've paid $27,000 in liquor licenses. And I deserve a little better communication for that.
Mr. Neary, you texted me to remove signs about people parking in front of your restaurant. I came down at midnight to remove signs. You've complained about festivals blocking your parking and I've told you you have 535 spots available to you, less than 60 feet away from your restaurant, and you stated to me, that ain't good enough. I had coffee with you one night and you said, and I quote, "I don't care about the 2% place of eating tax, Kevin, I just want to know where the money's being invested." We have an opportunity now to work together to invest that money appropriately and I look forward to doing so.
I do, without the lecture, I hope you'll be.
No, no lectures necessary, I'm just stating my opinion, sir, and you stated yours, so it's been a wonderful experience. Anyone else from the audience? From the dais? We have a motion, we have a second on item three C. In favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Let's take a roll call.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Donald Cummings?
Aye.
Becky Ruby?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marks?
Aye.
Gene McGowan?
Aye.
Robert Swanson?
Aye.
What's the call?
Motion passes 5 to 3.
Motion passes 5 to 3. In case anyone curious where I stand, I support the motion. This will again be considered at November 6th, City Council meeting. Item 3D, performance review of zoning ordinance regulations related to the A-frame signs. Uh, some, some direction I think would be helpful, yeah, pretty much.
I just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
David's got a brief report and I think all of you are familiar with some of the discussion with respect to consistency and questions and all that good stuff, so.
History's a long one. Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I was, I was asked to kind of give an overview of the A-frame sign regulations and kind of how they've been performing. I know we've had a number of questions over the last few months regarding some of the regulations. But before I get into what the regulations are, I think it's important just to give a, it was, it was a long history, but I'll, so I'll try to be concise. But prior to 2011, we did not have any regulations on the books regarding A-frame signs, so they were really prohibited by omission. And we were seeing a proliferation of these signs throughout the downtown area, but rather than take kind of a hard code enforcement stance, we knew that we were going to be working towards revising our sign regulations and we'd incorporate some clearer regulations for A-frame signs. So in 2010, we presented draft regulations to the committee of the hall and asked for direction to proceed with plan commission public hearing and outreach on those regulations. We were granted that direction, so we started attending the merchants' meetings and presenting the draft regulations. And at each one of these meetings, the primary focus centered around the A-frame signs. By the time we got to plan commission in 2010, December of 2010, again, most of the discussions were still focusing around A-frame signs and the commission asked for additional research on, on the topic. So at the follow-up meeting, after conducting that research, we summarized some of the testimony we were hearing, both for and against A-frame signs. We reviewed how they were being used downtown, whether it was just for, you know, sales and specials, or for now hiring signs, or if it was just kind of redundancy or business advertisement. And then we reviewed potential alternatives to A-frame signs. The plan commission had asked that we work with interested merchants and property owners towards alternatives to A-frame signs. So we, we did that. In February of 2011, we held a meeting with businesses and property owners and developed some recommendations and then we presented those to the plan commission in April of 2011. The plan commission did recommend to prohibit A-frame signs due to the redundancy of the messages cluttered appearance of the street, streetscape and off-premise placement, and to move forward with alternatives to the signs. So before bringing it back to the council, we kind of refined what those alternatives were and presented them in September of 2011. We refer to them as downtown directional signs or projecting signs, and we can, I'll touch on those later. The committee of the hall expressed a desire to allow A-frame signs with some conditions and so A-frame signs were ultimately approved along with the downtown directional signs and projecting sign alternatives, the catch there being that you can't have all three. It was kind of, you can have an A-frame sign, projecting sign, or downtown directional sign. And then we had a one-year review period, so a year afterward, did a similar presentation kind of on how, how the regulations were functioning and at that time the council did not request any changes. So this, this map, everything in the, kind of the, the light red shows where A-frame signs are allowed. They're allowed in the downtown business districts. The intent of these signs is really to allow businesses that don't have similar opportunities as businesses maybe in other commercial corridors. A lot of the businesses along State Street and even some on Third Street don't have a front lawn to place a freestanding sign in. It's a more pedestrian-oriented area, so an A-frame sign works well to attract the attention of pedestrians. But identifying that, and we also identify that there are potential hazards. It can result in a cluttered appearance, they're, they're inexpensive signs, so they're easy to obtain and put out. They can pose hazards to pedestrians or they can really minimize the maneuverability in certain areas of the downtown where we don't have large sidewalks. So we developed the following regulations. First and foremost, a permit is required. It's an annual permit that has to be renewed. We work with our communications coordinator to get the word out periodically that the permit is required. For all current permit holders, we send notification letters when their permit's about to expire so they have an opportunity to renew it. Then we place these small yellow stickers on the signs, so it's easy for us to identify which ones have a permit and which ones don't. Just kind of briefly touch on the regulations. Every business is permitted to have one A-frame sign provided they don't have the downtown directional sign or projecting sign. A maximum area of four square feet, I'm sorry, height of four, four feet, maximum area of six square feet. They're to be displayed only when a business is open, so they can't be left out overnight. They can't be permanently anchored to the ground, illuminated. We asked in, you know, in inclement weather, heavy winds, that they be put away. And then we asked that they don't be blocked, they don't be placed to block sidewalks, driveways or alleys. We do allow A-frame signs both on private property and public property. This illustration kind of shows how they can be placed on public property. These are for the, the businesses that might not have the front lawn area. They have to be within a foot of the property line, up against the building, and you have to maintain at least five feet of clearance on the public sidewalk. So this, this really works well on State Street and on some, some portions of Third Street. We also ask that there's a liability insurance provided, so if anything does happen, if it blows into the roadway and damages a vehicle, the city's not responsible. This is kind of an aerial view, bear with me here, I'm going to try to explain a little bit. Another opportunity to place a sign in the public right-of-way. So we allow businesses that are not located on Third Street or State Street to place a sign at the nearest intersection, identifying that their business is down the side street. So business B could place an A-frame sign kind of in this corner area, in between where the two sidewalks meet, in the public right-of-way, provided they give us the insurance needed. But the businesses along Third Street cannot place signs on, on the corners. I think the, the key word in this regulation is that if your lot does not front on Third Street, you're allowed to place that sign on the corner. So in this example, business C, that business space may not front on Third Street, but the lot that the building sits on does. So business C has an opportunity to place an A-frame sign kind of anywhere in the open space area outside of the building, but cannot place it in that, in that corner on the public right-of-way where business B could. Clear on that? Okay. Sorry. The mix between private and public is about 60/40, mostly on private property, but we still have a good number that are in the public right-of-way. The regulations that we have in place, we've been tracking permits since then and we've seen the number of permits double in that timeframe, so I don't think that anyone's merely being deterred by the regulations that we have. When it comes to code enforcement, there is routine code enforcement and kind of constant contact on the topic, mostly regarding the placement of the signs, signs not being put away at the end of the business day, not being picked up if they're knocked over, or maybe signs being installed without a permit. The penalties could be $50 for each offense. You can revoke your permit if you've had more than three offenses in a calendar year. We haven't really had to use those tools very often, we've only had to collect fines four times. Most businesses, once they're aware the, the regulations, are cooperative and we've never revoked a permit. We've came close, but it was towards the end of that calendar year and the permit was renewed the following year. So I just wanted to, to briefly touch on some of the other sign opportunities. If you do have a front lawn area, you have the ability to install a freestanding sign. All businesses have an opportunity to establish a wall sign unless they're kind of a, on the interior of a building without exposure to the outside of the building. We have signs at the corner saying more shops down the side streets. We also have our directory map tables where we try to provide directions to, to all businesses downtown. The downtown directional sign can come in a few different forms. This would be an agreement between a property owner, maybe in the middle of a block, that wants some exposure on the corner. They could work with a private property owner to either be placed on their freestanding sign, say, you know, business B down the block, or to have a second, smaller freestanding sign up to 10 square feet identifying additional businesses on the block. The downtown directional sign, that same concept can be applied to a wall sign, pointing to businesses down the street, again with an agreement with, with other, with other property owners. We've seen this used a few times. I think right here at the corner of All Chocolate Kitchen, we have a downtown directional sign that identifies what is now craft urban and other businesses. And then that, that same directional sign could take the, take the form of a projecting sign. The projecting sign is one that we thought would, is a good alternative to an A-frame sign because it gives you kind of that perpendicular exposure to the building, where a passerby might not see the wall sign mounted on the building, but they, they would see a projecting sign the same way they would see an A-frame sign. So that's kind of the background and the regulations in a nutshell. I'm having to answer questions and I guess I'm curious if there's, if there's any issues or concerns that you have with the regulations we have in place and how we might address those.
Alderman Maladra.
So...
Swanson.
I think it, I think it's pretty good. I'll state that right up front, but it, it doesn't capture every, you know, potential need for an A-frame. So you emphasize that if you're built, if your business is on a lot that doesn't face Third or State, you can put, place a sign on Third or State as long as it doesn't interfere. But if your business doesn't front those streets, but you're in a building that does, then you're sort of skunked, right?
Stuck to the private property side.
Right. Yeah. And so that's basically the sticking point that we have currently. So, so that business is in a building, it's the Berry House. If we allowed every business, or if every business in that building were to put an A-frame out, how many would there be?
I think there's at least a dozen different businesses in the Berry House. So, right, what's good for one would be good for all.
Right. So then we have a forest of A-frames.
And I think that was, that was actually one of the properties that kind of drove that specific language, that it be a lot that does not front on Third Street because, because you could end up with that clutter on the corner. And then it was specifically intended to provide exposure to those businesses that are kind of down the way a little bit. And that the Berry House does have an opportunity and has a freestanding sign in their front, front area.
All right, thanks.
Alderman Bruno, then Alderman Swanson?
Thank you. You had a slide where directional signs can be put on another business with an agreement with that business. So if you're business A and they have an agreement to put a sign up pointing to business B around the corner, does that signage count against the business A's sign package?
It does not. It's kind of a bonus 10 square feet to provide that additional exposure to neighboring businesses.
That's it for now, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Swanson?
We, we passed the ordinance in 2011 and in 2012, we did an update, a one-year, and concluded that the ordinance was working fine. Now, it's five years later, my question is, what types of complaints have we generated over that five-year period? Or questions about the sign ordinance or, or any? I, I see that we don't have very many violations. How about questions or complaints?
I, I think it's a matter of opinion. Some, some folks, and this was the same back when we adopted the ordinance, is it's about half the people think that they're charming and pedestrian-oriented and it's a quaint downtown area. Others find them to clutter the streetscape and find them obnoxious. So I kind of get that kind of, that mixed feedback. From our standpoint, from code enforcement, it's really just kind of those issues of them occasionally being left out overnight, or people not aware that they needed a permit for the A-frame sign. Other than that, not too many issues.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Kilburg?
Yeah, is there a fee associated with the permit?
It's a $60 fee.
$60, okay.
That's right. Alderman Bruno?
Thank you. Would the code permit any type of sharing of an A-frame sign? For instance, we, it's, it's fair to worry about a forest of A-frame signs, let's be using the example of Berry House, but can, can the code cap the number that any property could have and could, could three businesses within Berry Shop, you know, just get one and have a little blurb on each one?
I think there's always potential, but I think the, the enforcement of that would be difficult from both the city's perspective and probably a landlord's perspective of who came first and who gets to be on that sign.
Thanks.
Mr. DeGroot and I had a conversation, I think other council members may have had one as well. one as well, with respect to expanding the boundaries, if you will, for businesses who currently can't because of zoning have an A-frame sign. And in particular, I'm referring to the Stevens Street business corridor. An additional request was made that I shared with Mr. DeGroot as well, the possibility of installing wayfinding signs on Route 31 in Stevens and on Anderson Boulevard in Stevens, in the more shops here type signage. David, would you talk briefly about the zoning issue with respect to Stevens Street?
Stevens Street has become a very unique area to the downtown. It was originally an industrial area, and it's really, over the years that I've been with the city, has slowly transitioned to more of a flex-use type area where we now have a brewery, and yoga, and a marketplace, and much more kind of neighborhood-oriented uses. So the zoning doesn't allow for A-frame signs in the industrial districts because I'm not sure we want to see them on Kirk Road and in our industrial parks, and that area is currently zoned industrial. I think as we go forward with the downtown zoning update, which I'll be presenting to the council in a few weeks, that's an area where maybe we could incorporate some additional signage opportunities. I think just because of the nature of Stevens Street, too, I don't think they're maximizing the current sign opportunities they have with wall signs and freestanding signs. We have reached out to some of the property owners there to talk through that and see if we can kind of give them more exposure for the businesses that are there without A-frame signs. But moving forward, I think the downtown zoning update would be a good opportunity to maybe incorporate that area.
What direction would you like from us, sir?
Yes, any that you'd like to provide.
Or denotes and what have you?
From our standpoint, I mean, we're comfortable with the regulations. I think that the businesses are taking advantage of them. We've seen an increase in the number of permits, minimal enforcement issues rising to the level of fines or revocation. But if there are tweaks that we can make, I'd just like your feedback on that.
Your microphone, Mr. Marx?
My opinion is, it seems to be working. We haven't had a lot of issues with it. Unless staff has some real ideas, I would let it alone at this point. I mean, we've now had two reports without a lot of issues coming up, so I don't think everybody's happy with it, but as we talked before, that's the definition of compromise. So, you know, I think we might have struck a fair balance here, at least from what I'm hearing from some of the merchants and from the city staff, that we've got a little, we've got something that's working. So I would leave it alone unless anybody else has any other ideas.
Mike? I've had, in my, what, going on five years, had very little come up with regards to signs, so I think it seems to be doing fine. I concur with Alderman Marx.
Any thoughts, suggestions, obviously we can send your way, David?
I think I'm good. With our discussion, I think as we move forward with the downtown zoning update, that can really address some of the opportunities on Stevens Street, and I think there's probably opportunity there for better signage.
Alderman Kilburg?
How often does the actual signage change? Is there a seasonality to it, or are these essentially the same signs that are out there for six months or a year before there'd be any changes? I mean, how flexible are these signs? And are they, is it a case where you've got to, you have to have a sign out because everybody else has a sign out? I'm just saying, is it used really for marketing? And are they really being used to their full extent? That's, I guess, my question. I think, you know, could it be a little bit of, everybody else has one, maybe I need to have one, and that the information on it becomes stale?
There may be some of that. It's really variable on how businesses use them. Some of them, it really is just kind of redundancy, states the name of the business, and their business is a few feet away with another sign. Others are advertising daily specials or services they provide. Some are using them to advertise that they need help, that they're hiring. So there's probably some of that, too, where, once you see one on the street, you look for that additional exposure and that opportunity. But I think, once you get into the regulations, there's limited opportunity to really put it down the block and advertise your business.
Have we had anything, have we done anything through economic development to try to maybe some type of a seminar or something to help merchants try to more effectively use these types of A-frames as a marketing tool? I don't know. Have we done anything there, or have we encouraged some deeper thought as it relates to the utilization of these signs? I think what's happened also is, is the fact that you've got so many of them, they lose their impact. In other words, if you got one in front of every business, I think that the tendency is, is sometimes people may just end up ignoring them because there's so many of them. Not that I'm against them, I'm just saying, I think sometimes because of the saturation, they're losing their effectiveness.
I think, you know, as, I don't think we've done any specific seminars on signed regulations or A-frames.
Not on regulations. I'm just saying, using it as a more effective marketing tool.
Yeah. Well, we definitely, when businesses come to town, try to let them know what their opportunities are and what their alternatives to A-frame signs are, if there's concern with, you know, a proliferation of them and then losing their effectiveness. Sometimes it's just the tenant coming in, and they don't have permission from the property owner to modify the freestanding sign or the wall sign. So that's usually the case in the downtown area in a multi-tenant building, and an A-frame sign's an easier way to go. But we have reached out to property owners, too, like the property owners on Stevens Street, and tried to let them know that, you know, we don't think they're using all the opportunities they have.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Ruby?
David, I'm just curious, the $60 permit fee, what, where does that money go? What budget does that go into?
We tried to do an estimate of what it would cost to kind of enforce these regulations between the permitting, the stickers, and doing routine inspections and code enforcement, and figured, you know, maybe, and then the mailings when permits are about to expire, and that's the fee we came up with.
Okay. And then, if a business has more than one sign, do they, they can only have one sign out at a time, but if they have, you know, a different sign, do they need a separate permit, or do they just need one permit and they can change out their sign if they choose to, or does that not happen?
I don't think that would be an issue. I don't know that we've had that come up. We probably just had to give them two stickers and they can swap out the signs.
Typically, people would just have like a whiteboard where they can change their message?
If they're looking to change the message, yeah. A lot of them are static, though, where it's just a static message.
All right. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir.
Thank you. You're welcome.
New business, ladies, oops, yes, new business, ladies and gentlemen. Anyone from the audience? Mr. Lieben?
Scott Lieben, chairman of the board of the chamber. We're living in interesting times, aren't we? I've lived here 41 years, and I really appreciate what each one of you is doing. You're not paid employees, you donate your time. We've always felt that you get a group of citizens together, and you will make the best decision for all citizens. And I think you just have to continually remind yourself that you don't need to take abuse. You have, you are servant leaders, and when you're servant leaders, you make an effort to do the best you can. We get out information, we try newsletters, we try phone calls, and then people say, "Well, you don't talk to me, you're not giving..." But what ultimately it comes down to, they don't hear the message that they want to hear. And as a citizen, when I hear citizens don't want any taxes, I'm a citizen. I want to donate to my community in whatever way I can to make it and keep it as good a community as it is. So all of us don't feel that same way. I'm standing up here, and I'm not talking for the other citizens, just myself, but a lot of the people that are very satisfied and proud to live in Geneva, they never even come here. I think there's a good point that we need to get information out if we want to pass a referendum, but you know that. That's not going to be an easy thing to do, and we're willing to support and help once we figure out what it's for. We need to know that. I think you know it, but I really appreciate you. I think those people that are certainly on the chamber board, where they're all volunteers, too, they do the same thing. They don't have to be there and spend their time doing it. So I just want to thank you for what you're doing for the city.
Anyone from the dais? Mr. Marx?
Maybe we should mention there is no meeting next Monday night?
Correct. October 30th, no meeting.
Just so people realize that.
Unless you'd like to come dressed up as something. We'll have the cameras rolling. So the next meeting is Monday evening, November 6th. With that, a motion adjourns in order? So moved. Alderman Marx makes the motion? Second. Alderman Swanson makes the second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, ladies and gentlemen.